So I'm gonna call us to order, for those of you in the audience. We don't have a board chair yet, we're reorganizing, so that's the only reason I'll do that. So it's 5:37, and do I have a nomination for board chair?
I'd like to nominate Dave Connery.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'll turn it over to you, Dave.
Okay, thanks. That's very much what I've done. What a great validation of my work for the last year.
Exactly.
There's no debate. Could I get a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Stockman.
Okay, second then.
Second.
All in favor? Alright.
Thank you.
Kathy is our vice chair. Second, I think we need to do CSSU reps next. And, I'd like to continue.
Right back to continue.
You had mentioned continuing.
Mm-hmm.
Bob would like to be on it.
Good.
Does anybody else wanna fight Bob for that, or fight me for that?
Or me?
Anybody care? No?
No fight.
So now, do we have to do that whole, like, who nominates one, or?
You can probably do a motion to do all three.
Okay, alright.
So, I'll make a motion to nominate Bob Finn, Kathy Stockman, Dave Connery, for CSSU.
Okay.
Okay.
Or?
I seconded.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, can we vote for ourselves?
Alright, yeah, I guess, okay. The other thing is clerk. Can I get a nomination for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Tim Williams for clerk.
Second then?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Tim Williams is clerk. Do we, uh?
Are all meetings this easy?
Yeah, yeah.
This is only once a year.
Oh, okay, good.
So clerk, do we do assistant clerk?
Technically, yes, we assign one.
Okay, can we get a nomination for assistant clerk?
Bob Finn?
Well, actually, I'd like to nominate Matt Worms.
I second that.
Oh, okay.
Alright, yeah. A big shot already. I like it.
All in favor of Matt Worms there as assistant clerk?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright. So committees, we have, facilities committee, I think, is Matt and Tim? Am I carrying on that way? And then for policy committee, it's a longstanding tradition.
Yes.
The newest member of the school board is our representative to the policy committee.
This is a very distinguished committee, I take it?
Well, it's a great way to get familiar with all of the policies.
Oh, great, sounds good.
That's how she put the lipstick on that pig, so. Now, the policy committee's great, it's just, you have a hole in your schedule, so we nominate you to do that.
Alright, sounds good.
Any others that we need to rank? Can we tell Gail Callahan reports on this meeting? Alright.
Negotiations committee?
Negotiations committee, okay.
That, oh, okay.
On the staff negotiations, support staff negotiations.
Okay.
And on the legislative breakfast committee.
Yeah. For support staff negotiations, I think we can continue, does anybody else wanna be a part of that?
How many people do you need?
I think it's usually like one person, or two people, but the second person is a backup, just in case.
Yeah.
I would join Bob.
Okay. So Tim and Bob on the support staff negotiations? That's already met a couple of times.
We set up the ground more than.
Okay, alright, so you guys communicate. The other things are CSSU level.
CSSU, yeah, superintendent evaluation, legislative breakfast, a number of other ones. Yep.
Alright.
I have PTO rep. I'm just going off Sandy's list.
Oh, really?
PTO rep, I don't ever remember that.
Dave Connery should be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Matt and I can definitely cover that, we both seem to be in them.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
Um, oh.
Matt will be the PTO rep, I'll be the vice PTO rep.
Now that's all on my list from Sandy.
Okay, that's great. I don't have any adjustments to the agenda, does anyone else have anything they'd like to add to the agenda? No? I know we have some folks in the audience that are participating later and doing presentations, is there anybody who wants to speak as part of audience communication? No? Okay, alright. So with that, we'll move on to 5.0, which is our presentation on school counseling.
Three minutes ahead of schedule.
Good job.
So we have Rachel Patraska and Katie Tyler, sorry.
Katie Tyler.
Great.
We have a.
There we go.
Alright. Would you like to sit down?
Yeah, you want to sit?
I think you'll pick up the mic better.
We're sitting, okay. Thanks, Nick. So we're really happy to be here today to present our school counseling program to you. And I'm Rachel Patraska, I'm the fifth, eighth grade school counselor, and this is my fourteenth year at Shelburne Community School.
And hi, I'm Katie Tyler, I'm the pre-K through fourth grade school counselor, and this is my first year in this role at Shelburne, so.
And we're really excited to be here, this is our first year working together, and we're a new team, and we're looking forward to showing you where we're at so far. Yeah. So, one of our expected outcomes is just to help you understand that school counseling and the services we deliver are part of the coordinated school health model. And it's a little bit hard to read, but there are eight different components of the coordinated school health model, and this is put out by the CDC, and you can see if you can, it's hard to read, but there's PE, school health services, nutritional services, health promotion for staff, and also health for, health and wellness for the family, and families and the community, and of course, school counseling and social services is at the bottom of that. So tonight, we're sharing with you our program and strategies.
Okay.
So, what you're looking at is, the American School Counselor Association has a national model, and this is the four quadrants that kind of make up this national model. And, so the foundation is really just talking about what our beliefs and philosophy are, our vision and mission for working as school counselors, and really kind of laying that groundwork for making sure that our service delivery is meeting the needs of students based on the domains of academic achievement, career and college readiness, and social and emotional growth and development. And then the delivery system is really, that's where we'll be focused today, but that's what it looks like day to day, when we're in the classrooms, when we're meeting with students, and how it looks as far as us providing our services to teachers, to community members, families.
And so, the third quadrant, management, is around tools that we use, it's use of data, it's action planning, how we use our time, even the use of our calendars, and accountability, that is also really looking at what we're doing and how we are affecting change with students. It's looking at student achievement and attendance, and behavior to help students make changes. So, our time is split up into direct service and indirect service, and the majority of our time is spent in direct service, about eighty percent. And you only see three bullets there, but that is really how we spend our time. School counseling, core curriculum, those are the classes that we teach daily, every week to students, and we're gonna go into greater detail about that later on. It's also in the handout that we gave you, so if you wanted to look at that, you can see all of the different curriculum that we're using on the very first page of your handout. Responsive services, that means that's referring to working with students individually and in small groups. And individual student planning, examples of that is working with students on their academic plans, and working on personal learning plans, which I'm sure you've heard somewhat about, and that's coming down the pike. And we've been working hard as school counselors in the SU to collaborate, so that what we're doing in terms of the personal learning plans is going to look similar from the sending schools to CBU.
Alright. So, ASCA also provides a set of standards called mindsets and behaviors for student success. And it's kind of describing knowledge, skills, and attitudes students need to really achieve academic success, and the other two, college and career readiness, and social, emotional development. The mindsets and behaviors come, become kind of the foundation for classroom lessons, for small group planning, and how we use activities and interventions to meet students' developmental needs. So, what I brought here is an example of one of the curricula that I use at the elementary level. In second grade, I'm teaching what's called super flex, and it's a social cognition curriculum, really helping kids to learn how they can be flexible thinkers, do some perspective taking, and more kind of self-awareness and self-regulation, so it uses these characters called unthinkable's, where we recognize these thoughts that get into our brains and are able to overcome them and use our super flex powers to be our best thinkers. So, the mindsets that this lesson kind of addresses is that belief in using their abilities to the fullest to achieve high-quality results and outcomes, specifically toward that social, emotional part. But when you have those skills, you're way more available for academics. And so, when you look at behavior standards, self-management skills to demonstrate self-discipline, self-control, and then the social skills of just creating positive and supportive friendships, and demonstrating that social maturity and appropriate expected behaviors.
Can you tell us what ASCA is?
Yeah, the American School Counselor Association, sorry.
And that's a national association?
It's a national association that kind of governs how we work in our roles. There's also Vermont School Counselor Association that we're both members, active members of, and so, they provide our professional standards and kind of the guiding principles for.
Guiding principles. And those are the standards that all the school counselors in Chittenden South follow?
Yep.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
So we wanted to show you what happens in second grade, and also looking at eighth grade, so the spectrum is quite wide. And so here's an example of a suicide prevention lesson using the lifelines curriculum, which is what we use. And this last lesson is how can I use what I've learned? And the mindsets and behaviors that we know students are getting out of this lesson are believing in, that belief in development of whole self, including a healthy balance of mental and social, emotional, physical well-being, and students being able to demonstrate that they can make ethical decisions around what they've learned, being able to take some responsibility, being able to advocate for themselves and assert themselves, those assertiveness skills are so important, and having the maturity to kind of handle a really challenging situation that may come up for them now, or in high school, or when they're adults.
So, the twenty percent of our time in all of these listed things really does end up being that, though, because of the wide variety of kind of where we end up and how we use our time. Is, so this is indirect service, so services that are provided on behalf of students, but may not have us interacting directly with students face to face. We do have more details of these in the handout, we gave you kind of what that looks like and how it's broken down. Different focuses happen throughout different parts of the year, but we do consult with teachers on working with students. We'll often go into classrooms to support teachers, apart from the time that we're teaching directly. We both coordinate and facilitate, I coordinate the K through four student educational support team, and Rachel does the fifth through eighth grade educational support team. And we work really closely with outside agencies. So, really, we end up, we welcome families, we meet with parents, we, it's kind of, it's pretty dynamic and can look different from day to day. One huge part is placement and transitions between grade levels, and orienting kindergarteners, and then the transition.
Transition to high school.
Yeah, and the transition from fifth to sixth grade even, from elementary to middle, even though it's within the same building. But we're kind of the behind-the-scenes people and the upfront people with that as well.
Is, you know, where does the eighty, twenty come from? Is that your rule, or is that ASCA's rule?
That's ASCA.
It's ASCA.
That's ASCA, yeah, so everything here is based on American School Counseling Association standards.
Yep.
I know that, like, we had a discussion about a health, count health educator, and I was curious if, because that didn't come in, did that affect the services that you're delivering, and it causes you to teach different things that you may not have to if that person was there?
Yep.
That is, okay.
It does, yeah. It definitely does, yeah.
So unfortunately, due to the airplay, we had the ti, this is, I wanted to give you an example of what our day looked like, could look like. And the times are all missing, and it's really unfortunate, so I'm happy to pass out a handout, so we printed off the slides, if that's helpful. And you'll obviously pass it around the group, and so you can kind of see what our day could look like. So, you know, beginning of the day, when we come into school, it's kind of checking in our voicemails and emails, and oftentimes, we're really running around the building, following up on something that happened the day before with a teacher, with a student. The next thing might be that we're teaching a lesson, Katie's, you know, mentioned her social cognition lessons that she co-teaches with a speech-language pathologist. Then we might end up at a grade-level meeting, and we meet with all of our teams every week, and some of those meetings are thirty-five minutes, and some are an hour and a half, depending on the grade level and what's on the agenda. We facilitate small groups, as we mentioned, as part of that eighty percent of our time. And one group that, it's a continual group every year and multiple times throughout the year, is anxiety. It's the most prevalent mental health disorder in the world, and we have a lot of students who are struggling with that. And so we use a curriculum that's listed in your handout, that's a research-based curriculum for anxiety. We might then do some observations, and we spend almost all of our lunches every day throughout the year, working with students. It's a great time to capture students and work with students, whether it's an individual, or typically, it's small groups.
Yep.
Then we might have another classroom lesson, Act One is, I'm not sure if you know the Act One legislation that came about around Brooke Bennett, and so we teach those classes. You've probably heard about that, and so, that's that safety lessons. Then we have our EST. We do our bullying and harassment lessons in the spring, and then throughout the year, we're actually redoing them again now. I'm sorry, do them in the fall, and we're redoing them again in the spring. We often notice that kids need a refresher during this time of the year, and then we.
What does EST stand for?
Educational Support Team. And there's, every school has an educational support team around the state, and it's really kind of the catch-all for students, and it's when a team, a teacher may have tried all kind of the tools in their tool belt to support a student, whether there's an academic concern or a behavioral concern, and then they come to the EST, which is like a think tank, which is comprised of a group of teachers from different levels, and a student is presented, and we kind of get together and figure out what's going on, and what are the steps that need to happen from there.
Yeah, and how can we strengthen that support for the teacher and for the student?
When you mention classroom lesson, that means you go into the classroom and deliver the lesson, correct?
Yep.
Yep.
And how do you determine who is going to be in the small group, like the anxiety group? Is that a referral from teacher, or?
It can be from teachers, it can be from parents, it can be from the planning room, where if kids are getting referred a lot for difficult behaviors. It can be from a lot of those sources. I think it depends, and we definitely kind of keep our, we kind of consult with each other as well to make sure we're meeting the needs. It's also something that is on our list of indirect services is the student support team. And that's when we meet as counselors, psychologists, principals, nurse.
School nurse.
And social worker, and so, yeah, and so we all kind of work together, so that.
I'm sorry, just the behavioral intervention.
Oh, and the behavioral intervention. So, that's when we all kind of put our heads together to say who's kind of popping up, but.
I think we get a majority of our referrals for anxiety from our school nurse, 'cause that's where students end up with stomach aches and not feeling well.
Or headaches, yeah.
And headaches, and it's kind of like trying to figure out what's going on.
What's going on, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, so we have a lot of referral sources, for sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Are parents aware of your services, and do they ever, you know, alert you to, you know, behaviors they've seen at home that you might be able to help with?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And part of that, you know, when we have our weekly team meetings with teams, it really is, you know, important that we are connecting with parents, and what we talk about at those weekly team meetings is who's gonna be the point person? Is it the teacher, is it one of us, is it the special educator, who is it? That's gonna be the one to reach out to parents, but anytime a student is part of a group that they're working with us, or individually, we're in constant contact with parents.
And we do work with parents, also just meeting with them, or talking with them on the phone, or giving them books or resources, or whatever that might be, to really strengthen, or helping them get connected with community supports, whether it's outpatient therapy, or whatever it might be, yeah.
Has this changed over the years? Is there a greater preponderance of anxiety and working with anxiety with kids?
I would say so, yeah. I mean, when I first started at Shelburne, I didn't have a curriculum for anxiety. It came up here and there, but it's definitely, it's incredibly prevalent. And it's something that a lot of students and adults and people that struggle with. And so it's really about learning the tools, how do I deal with these anxious times in my life, or in my day, so that I can be a student and be present and get the most out of my day, and not let these thoughts and feelings overtake, overtake me.
And a lot of it ends up being building self-awareness, and kind of building those skills to be able to take care of yourself when something feels even just a little bit stressful, to kind of catch it early, or. So it's really transferable skills to all areas, to academic areas, and to being a friend, and being a family member, and, you know.
I'm gonna have to meet with you guys later, this is. The lunch groups, that you mean, you try to touch all students, not just students that you're specifically serving? Do you try to get all the kids in there, just so that they can get to meet you, and?
So we see every student through the classes that we teach, 'cause we teach every, you know, we teach multiple lessons in every grade level every year. So that's really the way that we know we are meeting with every student.
Okay.
I wouldn't say that we meet with every student in a lunch group, but we.
It would be wonderful if we could.
We could, yes.
But you, like, obviously, there's folks that you are serving.
Yes.
And then there's folks outside of that, that.
Yeah, absolutely.
But they'll come in and they'll meet you in small groups.
We rotate through, so like, so, yeah, that's, so our lunch groups, I mean, for example, so I work with K through four students, and that's for, for lunch periods a day. So I do get to reach a lot of them, but it'll rotate through with maybe four to six weeks at a time. I have some groups that are a little bit longer standing, depending on kids' needs, but some that are pretty short, so they can be rotated through. But, yeah, I mean, if we had, if we could reach every kid in a small group, that would be amazing. But it is, what we do also is, when we present it, when we're in classrooms and we're teaching lessons, we do remind kids, you know, beginning of the year especially, here's what I do here, and while I'm here teaching, it's not, it's not the only thing. And so, you know, here's where our offices are, here's how you can reach us if you need any further level of support, and teachers are really good with that, too.
And we do, we remind kids at almost, at the end of every class, have you have questions about what we learned about today? Come see us, come talk to us.
And how do you do that?
And also, for lunches, a lot of times at the elementary level, Katie will have students who she taps on the shoulder to come, but then they also bring a friend.
Yep.
So that's not unusual for them to just wanna bring a friend, just for comfort reasons.
Cool. So is that, so I'm just letting you in terms of overall staffing levels.
There is full-time planning room director.
Yes.
And then there's some Howard, I assume, part-time social worker.
She's full-time, but she has a limited caseload. She has a caseload of about fifteen families, I think.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
So, and there's full-time bed director, social worker, planning special behavioral interventions, nurse, psychologist, and onsite Howard. Yeah, no, it's a rich team, supporting those services, that's great.
So looking at our.
Yeah, our current area of focus and our next steps. And one thing we've been working on with Patty and Alan is kind of a universal prevention language and programs that we've been, we're working on right now. We've been talking a lot about ASCA, American School Counseling Association, and the alignment, Katie and I are new working together, this is our first year, and so we're really creating, our goal is creating a comprehensive K-8 program that aligns with the ASCA standards.
Yeah, and so that we're really making sure to complement each other's work, and so kids are really building on those skills and what they're learning year to year.
Parenting grand rounds?
Yeah, I mean, we've had this new program this year that has brought trainings and different kinds, kind of a really wide range. Parenting classes, suicide prevention, what do we, tonight, tomorrow is math, but really as a focus on getting, getting parents into the building and connecting with each other, and eating dinner together, and, you know, having a place where their kids can come to, and they can just get more education around specific topics.
Yeah, and that's connected to coordinated school health, and also around AYP as well. I know you've heard a little bit about personalized learning plans, PLPs, and so, we've been working hard on getting that ready, doing lots of great things that are happening that Alan's been working with. I've been working with teachers at school, well, with this, I don't know, we talked about core values, but we're really excited about that, and it's, good stuff is coming.
Is this a successor to IEPs, I take it?
It's actually not related to IEPs, so I don't know if you, I don't know how much you wanna go into it, but.
Yeah, thirty-second version is, it's actually an outgrowth of Act 77, state law, which is gonna be implemented, every child in the entire school will have a personalized learning plan, and it's gonna roll out over the next four years, but we'll have it in place for our seventh graders by November thirtieth of next year.
Great, yeah.
Yeah. And the final thing is, so RAMP stands for Recognized ASCA Model Program, and so, that's one thing that Rachel and I have been talking a lot, the CBU counselors, the CBU school counseling program is now under review to have, to be recognized as a model program, and that really means, it comes back to those four quadrants, and especially the accountability piece, and just how we deliver our work, but really using information, we'll talk about this next, but it's applying to really have a, yeah, data-driven program, where we have, we can really look at especially academic achievement, attendance, and behavior. And that's, that's data that's already kept within the school, referrals to the planning room, attendance, obviously, and, you know, what, report cards, things like that, to really decide kind of where the trends are, where specific needs are, where larger group needs are, so that we can really meet those needs, and.
Of students, yeah.
Yeah, but really using data to inform the work that we do.
And make changes to what we do.
Yeah, and to show that what we're doing is effective in making change and helping kids in their development.
There's a lot of national data on that subject.
I know, you know, one of the significant correlators for years has been, you know, student attendance, so, you know, in terms of dropout rates and that sort of thing, so. Let's say if you don't show up, you get behind, you get behind, you feel worse about it, et cetera, it leaves out your peers, so.
And that's already something that we use to reach out to kids to meet individually or in small groups with, or that we will talk about in team meetings, to say, how can we wrap around this family?
How can we support, how can we support these parents?
So that's something we're working towards, it's a multi-year process, this RAMP application and process, in terms of looking at our program, collecting data, and then, that's our goal. And part of it would be to create an advisory council.
Yes.
Of, of community members and staff members to really, to, again, really show that we are partnering with people within and outside of the building in Shelburne to meet kids' needs, and really be able to communicate what we're doing. So, we have a direction.
Yeah, great, nice work.
So you're more than just those mean people in the planning room?
Yeah, we're not those people in the planning room.
Well, those people aren't mean either.
No.
Yeah. When you come to us, you're not in trouble, yeah.
Right.
Just a quick question, you know, Rachel, you've been around a long time, Katie, what's your background? You know, I know we had the higher packet, but that was a long time ago.
Yeah. Well, you've had probably a few since then, too. I actually, years ago, was the planning room co-director at Shelburne with Georgine Grover, and then, just through my work there, decided that school counseling was the direction I wanted to go in, so I left the position to go to grad school, and worked at Virgin's Elementary the last couple of years, and came back when it opened. So it's wonderful, I mean, it's felt like such a treat to be back, and to really have a little mix of some familiarity coming back into the building, but also just this complete fresh start and a lot of learning, and I think Rachel and I have really been able to connect and really start to build some good programming together, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. None of us can stay away.
Been in the planning room, I feel like I've met three people, one of which is John Madden, he started in the planning room.
Yep, yep, he did. It's a good place to start. I mean, you really get a comprehensive view of what's going on in the building.
As a student or...
No, he was from, you know, I think he was from Queensbury High School. You know, you talk about anxiety and seeing more kids in the, you know, the anxiety curriculum growing. You know, have you seen anything change with respect to kids being nervous about coming to school and school safety and any sort of those things creeping into our, our school? You know, especially post-Sandy Hook style events and things like that or...
I have not, I mean, I'll say at the elementary level, I, I did see that the year of Sandy Hook at the school that I was at previously, but I have not seen that here this year. I think the kids who I've worked with at my level that have some anxiety about coming to school is really more related to wanting to be with their parents versus wanting to be not at school. And some of them do, though. I mean, it's actually, it's a really wide range. Some of it, it's the academic pressure, some of it is feeling socially isolated. I mean, it is a wide range. But at the younger grades, I'm thinking about my really young students, K and one, there's a few kids right now that I'm at least in touch with who, a lot of theirs is, I just don't wanna leave mom.
And I think sometimes when there is some kind of like really significant event like Sandy Hook, something that's very traumatic. Like I, I remember very well, when I first started working in Shelburne, it was the fall of two thousand and one and nine eleven. And I will never forget that year at Shelburne, being that was my first year at Shelburne and how kids reacted, how they felt and the trauma. And we were really just learning about trauma and how that affects, affects kids and adults and all the research. It wasn't, it wasn't really there yet, but I'll, I'll never forget that. And so we do see that from time to time when there's something major, a major event that happens and how that affects kids. And, yeah, it is scary, it's scary, you're scared, you're scared about what's gonna happen next, is it gonna be, is there something else that's gonna happen next? So sometimes we do see those types of things when there's a major event. But I wouldn't say now, at this point in this year, in terms of Sandy Hook, we're not seeing now. That's a great question.
Well, it's great, it's great to meet you guys, I've heard your names so many times and I've probably seen you in the school, but I never put the name with the face. So it's always great to do these things and have the...
Yeah.
Matt, we have a regular cycle, every three years we cycle through the different, there's student services, curriculum and unified arts. So we have these presentations every week, every month, sorry. So it's nice, it's just great.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Did you, did you guys have orientation, Matt, today or is that another time? Another time?
Did you notice what they were doing?
Yeah, yeah, that's cool. I know. So we're gonna do the principal's report now?
Exactly, absolutely. So hopefully you got a copy of this, did everybody get a copy?
Yeah.
And I did just wanna mention that there's a new process going on at PTO and Shannon Baird, who is the connection between PTO and the teachers, is doing a slideshow of a lot of different teacher activities. So there is a link there if you'd like to just peruse that. So we're really honing in on the school as a whole and what's going on with more of the school as a whole. So a couple of weeks ago, we had one hundred, the one hundredth day of school, so we call it Hundreds Day. And students are encouraged, elementary school students, I should say, are encouraged to bring one hundred of something to school. And we also celebrate through kind of the character Zero, the hero, who comes in and talks about the importance of zeros and numbers. And this year it was Chris Danforth who came in dressed as kind of a, you know, a character. So it's a great way to celebrate the Hundredth Day of School and place values, so.
And also just highlight that last week we had our kind of winter concert. So if you've been able to come over, you would have heard our, always a highlight, our fifth grade band putting on their performance. We had a standing room, only audience of about three hundred. And then that also was our wind ensemble and our stage band. And just a great performance, they really did a nice job.
Yep. Do those, do those ever get announced in the Shelburne news? Do you know? Like, is there a calendar thing that's ever put in there?
I don't know that they've covered them and written about them after the fact, but not ahead of time.
It's a good idea, though, to put them in the calendar.
Yeah. You can build on that, that'd be easy to build that with Sherry.
And it's kind of one of those things like...
Draw some community in and...
Almost like you could put it under a, a board's corner style. Like, not a board's corner article, but like, a community update.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
You know, just to follow on to that, Alan, it's just exciting to see the, you know, kind of the excitement of the kids that Tim Buckingham brings to that program that, you know, I think it's been missing for a long time.
He's doing a really good job.
He's a rock star.
Yeah, he really is.
I will pass that on.
Absolutely.
More ways than one.
Yep. And speaking of anxiety, the spelling bee, are you over it, Dad? Just, you know, great spelling bee and it came down to, I don't know, about four hours of back and forth between Lena and Nena. And, but, yeah, we'll be sending Lena Karas on to the state-level spelling bee that's gonna be happening at St. Mike's. And had some really good participation in that and kind of a recognition of, it's been David Southworth, kind of, you know, heart, heart work for a long time keeping that spelling bee and that GOP going. So just publicly wanna thank him for that as he'll be retiring this spring. And we'll be looking for someone new to step up for that.
We have this great event that takes place and has for a couple of years now, and it's Valentine's for Veterans, so kids make Valentines, obviously, send them overseas to our veterans. We did it during our Mix It Up Day, this passed, again, it was a couple of weeks ago. And that's when younger kids and older kids get together. So maybe an eighth grade group gets together with, say, a first grade group, and then they do an activity. Many of them chose to do the Valentines for Veterans and send it out, again, around Veterans, Valentine's Day. Just a great opportunity to elicit some of those feelings from veterans of when they were back in school. And so we got two great thank you notes from them and it was just very touching. So a wonderful event. We also just wanna acknowledge the book fair, so you just heard about Carrie Ahern, our librarian, and also Ellen Matthews and Fran Brennan, who all worked together to put on this unbelievable book fair. And apparently, at one point in time, it must have been a secret as to how much was made on the book fair, so I'm not sure if I should really reveal that on the, on the air. But, yeah, sales, this is gross sales. But in the...
Like, can't we leave?
Thousands, so it's just a really, it's a wonderful opportunity to, to raise a lot of money and get books in the hands of lots of, lots of our kids.
I was gonna say, more than raising money, almost is the excitement that kids have with that book there.
A week of just...
What, everybody's talking about what books they're going to order.
Yes, yes.
It's so wonderful.
Exactly, it is, it's a great event.
Yeah.
And then to, to that point, Read Across America is a national event that we celebrate as well. And that occurs the first week of March always, it's around Dr. Seuss's birthday. And this year, thanks go out to Jen Niles, Nancy Nakley, Shannon Baird, Natalie Watson and Jen Sabushi, who all work together. We have an assembly for our K, or pre-K, excuse me, through fifth grade students. And it's just a really exciting time, everybody's in the gymnasium and we're all, you know, celebrating reading. And we also, as adults, all of the teachers get up, me, a bunch of other adults, and we read a book. This year it was Oh, the Places You'll Go. So that's really fun to, to show kids how we kind of work together to read that, read that book.
And celebration today, you are officially the first school in CSSU to have a successful day of S-Back. Pulled it off today. So the, the Alpha and the Winson teams had their first day and feedback from both teachers and kids is, it, it's doable. It, it pulled it off, the technology worked, we logged in, you know, who knows in terms of the outcomes? But just in terms of, this has been a huge step to move from kneecap with books to sitting kids down, and that literally was probably eighty individual tests. I mean, it's computer adaptive, so by the time I walked around in the midst of, say, a seventh grade class, within twenty minutes, there were twenty-four different tests going and you could clearly see it adjusting where a student might be struggling with algebra. And a few questions later, they were having questions in subtraction. You know, because it's really designed to adjust, say, oh, that was too hard for you, let me give you something a little bit easier and we'll go back and forth and drill down and identify, here's what you really know and here's what you don't. It has, it has great potential. Was it without hiccup? And we had some hiccups today, but everyone worked through them, so we'll be continuing.
The what?
I, you know, it's, it's really going to be access to pretty accurate information of how our kids rank up against national standards, against the common core standards. Will it be an element of the PLP? I, I think probably more useful will be probably board outcomes and indicators is where it's really gonna be a way for us to really look at our programs holistically and at the same time, be having timely and useful information for teachers that says, this is what Alan can do and this is what Alan can't do and this is what we should work on. Which we haven't gotten from kneecap because you do the test in October and see it in March.
Right.
That wasn't really, it was, it was useful as a school, it wasn't useful to a teacher, so to speak.
So when do you expect to see data from the tests that were...
They're...
Today, tomorrow?
They're predicting, well, like, say a class that started today will have about four days of testing to finish the first battery, which is an ELA and a math set. And they're predicting that within weeks we'll have some initial data and that then there will be other data that has to be hand scored or human scored, that's gonna take a little bit longer. Judging by how things have rolled out, you know, if we see something this round within a month, that's probably gonna be pretty good, but still within the school year, I expect.
What was the temperature of anxiety among the kids that took the test, thinking about anxiety?
Kids, kids not too high really around this. Teachers, more, more so? There's a lot of anxiety in that just we've never done a test this way and what if it crashed? And it did crash at times. You know, but, you know, surprisingly, the kids are much more adept at navigating this than we are as adults. And so that was really our hard work.
It seems like what's at least coming home to our house is they've been doing a lot of prep.
They've been doing a lot of practice.
From a student standpoint, they really feel like, come on, let's, at least at my house, let's get going and start taking the test.
And I think there is some feedback about that in that, you know, we had scheduled time for teams to kind of take your team in, try it, because we want, we wanna make sure that a student's able to show what they know and not have the technology interfere. But I think you're right, Tim, that, you know, even the middle school teams were like, they had some possibilities of practice on Friday and Monday, let's say, no, we're gonna reach a level of text anxiety, test, not anxiety, but kind of overkill where they're like, okay, I've done, been there, done this, I don't care about this one. So it's, today I would call a success. Now, you can call me tomorrow if you'd like tomorrow's update, but we'll take it.
One day at a time.
And our mantra clearly is, this is gonna be the, the best S-Back that SCS has ever done. And we just keep pitching that.
Just retire undefeated, right?
There you go.
It was, it was, I did get a couple of comments and notes about, oh, my gosh, my child has fifteen days of testing before the end of the year. And then I went back and reviewed the email that this woman got as well. It's fifteen days of two hours of test, right? Two hours of block, essentially.
Usually it's about an hour of window, yeah.
Okay.
And so, let's say...
You block out two, four? You block out two hours in order to do an hour of testing?
Exactly, really what it, what they're predicting is most of, most everyone after an hour of really digging down, that's how long the middle schoolers were there today, working for an hour. A few are done, it's an untimed test. So we may have some students who will continue this for three, four, five hours. We also have some students who are done.
Yeah.
So that becomes kind of our next logistical issue is, how do you keep the education going so that, you know, we're not just treading water while we're waiting for Alan to get done with his test and show his best ability?
And just a reminder, kneecaps were six hours. So when people, you know, a lot of talk about how long S-Back is, and I'm not suggesting it's not longer, but we did take kneecaps and they were six hours.
I, I got it.
Clearly the practicing was something we didn't spend a lot of time. We didn't go in and simulate a lab and that was as much for us to learn the system because literally a teacher has to distribute an individual test to an entire class and they have to log on and you've gotta have code words and those kind of things.
Yeah.
That was, it was a little easier to hand the book and here's your pencil and go down it.
Got it.
And I did just wanna highlight that as of today, you'll see that our enrollment numbers are the same from February to March, seven hundred and sixty students. And we have seventy-six kindergarten students currently registered for next year.
I just noticed there were like, there was that six-person drop from December to February. Are those kids moving away or...
We did have some kids, we...
We did have a, a couple of families, yes.
Yeah.
That actually, I think signifies two families.
Thanks. All right, so I think the next is the facilities report, facilities committee. So I know that after the bond, a couple of weeks ago, I had sent a note to Kathy who was ever, David actually sent the first note saying he wanted to get the process going again to review and figure out next steps. I had asked you guys to convene and discuss what you heard that was good, what you heard that was, was bad, you know, what could we do for next steps and just discuss that. I, I did see that, you guys have come up with a little PowerPoint that kind of summarizes actions of that or outcomes of that meeting. And then you went and met with Doran Whittier afterward as well. I do hear that David is willing to chair the facilities committee, which I think is awesome because you bring not only the enthusiasm of somebody who wants to get things done, but I appreciate your experience in the field, which is, which is great. Your analysis in January and February was definitely useful to me, so I appreciate that and I look forward to you. I think it's great having a non-board member as a chair of this committee. I think it, because it gives us a little bit more depth on the committee. So I think that's, that's great. I do wanna, I think that there's a bunch of things that I've been hearing, coming into my inbox and people talking and the way the community goes. It's my feeling that we should keep this process going forward, before we start with this. We should keep this process going forward. I think we should look toward bringing up another bond vote in a short period of time once we've analyzed what we think we need and what we think the community will take and understand. I'd like to maintain focus on the process and let's try to separate the people from it as much as possible, if we could. And let's make a point to include in our timelines that we have an opportunity to sit in the cafeteria and put up charts and graphs and, and have everyone their chance to come in, just like we did two times before, and give folks a chance to talk about this before we put it up for ballot. So, so with that, I'd like to see what you folks feel before we start with this. Should we just go through this and discuss it afterward? And we have another thing on the agenda later, which is an action item for door, funding Doran Whittier on a not-to-exceed basis. We can discuss that particular item. Sorry, I should lean forward when I speak. We can discuss that at that point, that specific item, but I think what we'd like to do here, feel free to discuss, we'll go through this and kind of look at what sort of scope we may have and comments that we have. And David, you're, as a member of the committee, it's totally okay for you to speak at this time? It's not a problem at all, in my opinion? Does anybody have any objection to that?
It would be valuable.
So, any other comments?
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, one comment, I mean, the need doesn't go away. I mean, the windows, there still need replacement, you know, all the problems that existed when we started this committee are still there. So I think it's incumbent upon us as a board and a committee to figure out a way to get it done because it's not going away. It's not gonna be any less money down the road. So we need to, I just, get a work plan and move forward and move forward with some speed. I agree with you on that, Dave.
Okay.
The other thing is that I've been getting a lot of feedback from community members, neighbors... The other thing is that I've been getting a lot of feedback from community members, neighbors, friends. Who are interested and eager in joining in to help out on the facilities committee. Two, two people in particular, I've passed the names on to David. And I think that's a really good sign, I think that's part of keeping the whole momentum going and, and continuing to work on it. Because people are interested in it now. And some of the people said, you know, I'm, I want to go in with, you know, neither on one side or the other. But I just want to go in and help out and work on it. So I think that's very important to know, that that's out there right now.
Cool. All right. Go ahead.
So before we go any further, are you going to be talking?
Yes.
For this presentation here? And you're going to be joining the discussion?
Probably ad hoc.
Do you think you could join us at the table?
Sure.
I'm running out of lights here.
Good thing we got a bigger room. Because we needed a bigger table.
All right, so what's part of your background? Sure. So, as was discussed, the facilities committee met after the vote. And really just to kind of do a little debriefing session on how, you know, the work that had been done over the past year had evolved and the outcome and thoughts about, you know, what can be done to improve? Or what should be done to move forward? And ask to kind of put together some options and considerations for the school board to consider. So we kind of put this thing together here, just to kind of give you a little feedback and input from the debriefing session. Put together a few suggestions for moving forward, should the school board decide to do that. We've laid out a few options to consider and, and some schedule considerations. So our job tonight is, is really just to kind of lay out the information for you, so that you can make an informed decision on what you want to do next. So during the facilities committee meeting that we had last week or the week before, we most of what was discussed there was that, you know, most of the people that they spoke to and heard through the committee, community understood the need for the re-roofing and the window replacement, there were some questions about, you know, cost and what, what was the scope of work and, and that sort of thing. But they understood the need. And, and they also heard that there was, you know, a really strong consensus, or a desire, a strong desire for consensus among school board members. Some of the, heard from a number of residents that, that really, you know, had seen consensus from the school board at past meetings on a number of different decisions. And found that it was important that they get the full backing from the board on this project. And then a few things that they felt, you know, wanted some additional information on were relative to the need for the D and E wing renovations. It was something that although, you know, the facilities committee had, you know, done their best of getting as much information out there through the paper and through different social media and so forth. There was still a need for additional information to be presented. There was some questions about, you know, the reasoning for the change in room configuration, some people, you know, didn't understand, well, if we've got these classrooms here and we want to enclose them, you know, why do we need to create small group instruction spaces? And, and, you know, why are we, you know, doing these, including these other smaller spaces into this? Why can't we just go back and put the same classrooms in but fully enclose them? And, and so this goes back again to kind of explaining the process and the, and the educational thinking behind the, the changes that were made. Questions regarding the phasing of the work. The, you know, it's because the work is planned to be done inside the building where we would be moving people around. It can be a little bit confusing and so I think some of the ideas behind not giving too much information on that was that we didn't really want to confuse people about how the phasing would work. But I think moving forward, we need to find a way to kind of explain how the phasing of the construction is planned.
One of the things I think about that is that I think it would have been much easier to just get three trailers and tell people we were going to put them there. And just say, we're going to put everybody in these enclosed spaces, separate from the construction and do that. So that was like the, the map we showed that one time of trying to move things around and folks just didn't, they didn't understand it.
And, and maybe spending a little bit more time, you know, defining the cost of the project, I think there was some confusion out there because there were standalone cost proj, project numbers and then there was combined costs and, and people looking for, you know, more of a breakdown. And so that's another area that, you know, could be improved on.
I think that in that sense, like I. I'm still on the fence about your philosophy of not releasing all the cost, I think maybe releasing some of the cost would have been better. But to your credit, at about ten fifty PM on Monday, March second, someone stood up and said, yeah, the roof is right, the windows are right. And you're getting a great deal on the windows, you know, so if that person had written four other letters to that, you know, to that opinion, it would have made a big difference versus the four letters he wrote before he was educated on the cost that you had given him. So like that small group instruction was, was good, but we have to figure out a way to, to sell that.
Right.
Earlier.
Yeah. Yep, exactly.
And I might just want to underscore that it really is to me, from what I was hearing out there was, was the why question. It's very, very easy for people to understand why I need a new roof, because you can walk into the school and, you know, stained ceiling tiles and all that kind of good stuff, that was very easy, but it was hard for people to really understand, well, why do I need to essentially gut these two wings and start all over again, they've been fine for almost fifty years. So I think that's, to me, is a compelling statement that we need to do a much better job at saying why that needs to happen. What's the benefit, what's the good part of that?
And just kind of follow on to that, David, I mean, having, you know, it's kind of ironic that the spelling bee was going on and it got crowded. And they had to move it down into either the D or the E wing. And, you know, on either side, both classrooms were empty when it started. And then as it progressed, the throngs of kids moved either into class or came through, I mean, it, you know, in my opinion, I mean, if I were a teacher in that area and had to work under those conditions on a daily, it's, it's ridiculous to try to, you know, conduct a legitimate heads down learning in that environment. And, you know, I know it was the cool thing to do fifty years ago, but it is, that ship has sailed and it's, you don't have to spend much time in there to realize how really bad it is.
And I, and I think, I think to that point, you know, part of explaining the need might be looking to have maybe small videos or, or, or something, some way of, of showing people what you've noticed by being in the space. You know, because it's different just being able to talk about it than being in there under those kinds of environment and hearing it for yourself.
If I might have a word, I, I think that the the thing I couldn't get my mind around was, we're, we're talking about six and a half million dollars to reconfigure the D and E wings. And I get it about the open classrooms, the safety issues, the lockdown and the noise abatement. But what I don't get is why we're, why we aren't even being presented the option, the cost option of walling off every classroom, keeping the corridors where they are. We, we solve the issue of safety and we solve the issue of noise abatement, okay, fresh air becomes an issue. But there are, you know, how many schools in the country have access to fresh air? And we're going to be redoing the H, the HVAC, you know, we can, we can solve any issues of, of air circulation with that. But we were never presented with that option.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's a good point and I think, you know, that falls into the reasoning for the change in the room configuration. You know, and I think, I think going through some of those options like you're talking about and having that sort of roundtable discussion, you know, if we lay out several options, like what Bob's talking about, if people have ideas like that, you know, I, I think moving forward, we can present those and say, you know, okay, this is, these are the different options, these are the pluses and minuses of each. And, and it'll open up for discussion, I think that's a good point.
I mean, I, I mean, that's where I would go with this, is to come through with some options and it's just your typical, you know, option analysis. Here's the option, the liabilities, the benefits, the associated costs, and you go down through the list and yep, nope, yep, yep, nope.
So are there still fire marshal requirements for having two means of egress for all students in every classroom?
And I thought that there were requirements that there, there has to be some, for students, some outside connection.
There, there has to be means of egress, it's, it's all defined in, in your codes and it can be various ways through, through exit accesses. And school occupancies are, are one of the rare occupancies where window exits actually are okay. And I think it's the only occupancy, but, but any option that you'd look at, I mean, you have to address all those code issues.
Yeah, I, I think technically actually you don't have to have two means of egress out of a space unless it is beyond a certain square footage. Uh, this is a, it's a fully sprinkled building, so there's different stipulations in the code that allow for.
Square footage, length of travel.
Right. So, you know, all that would be taken into consideration in these other options that, you know, you might look at or might be considered. Yeah, so, and then the cost control containment measures, a couple of times, I know people had asked, you know, what, you know, what's being done to make sure that this project doesn't get cost overruns and, and, you know, what do you have in place? And so I think just explaining, you know, we, we gave responses and they seemed satisfied. But I think just kind of being proactive about the process that we go through in maintaining cost control and containment and what's being done to, to make sure we stay within budget, I think laying that out there for people is helpful. And then, and then, you know, then the question of what happens if bids come in lower than the estimate? And I think there was varying degrees of responses for that and I think having a definitive answer is helpful.
Which we provided that out for the first bubble, which was give it back, add scope, you know, and I forget what the third one was, but I thought we had three answers. Obviously adding more scope went over like a left foot.
So, so next steps, you know, one is like what Kathy was just talking about, identifying interested residents who voted both for and against, you know, provide input and feedback. And to be active, you know, the committee went for a full year without really, you know, anyone kind of saying anything until the last few months there. Or even the last month. And so I think reaching out to, and trying to get active participation from residents to hear both sides, their input and feedback and having those kinds of meetings like you're talking about, Dave, where invite people, have lunch or, you know, cookies or something provided by the PTO and, and and have charts and roundtable discussions about each of the options and laying it out there and, and doing that sort of thing is, is important. Reanalyzing the scope of the project, so, you know, looking at, is there a potential scope that can be removed? You know, for example, in terms of the re-roofing project, are there ways to possibly done, do like an infrared scan of the roof and evaluate which areas actually have the wet insulation and just, and keep, you know, whatever insulation that's good and cut out the bad and put new insulation on top of it. It's not what we normally would recommend because the quality of the insulation, you know, deteriorates over time and so forth. But there are other things like that, that are cost savings measures and there might be, you know, something to consider. And which leads to Bob's point of, you know, providing other options. And, and, and also, you know, in addition to that, doing some more testing on the hazardous materials, getting a better handle on the scope of the work that's planned and getting testing of all those materials done so that, you know, maybe our allowance value that we have in there as a placeholder may possibly be reduced, depending on the outcome of the test results.
Can that possibly be under our regular facilities budget?
It could be.
Good.
So, and then, you know, again, evaluating the options and considerations. Next step is selecting an option to move forward with. And then selecting a date for a possible bond vote. Which is actually something that we would recommend and we'll go get into the, into the schedule in a minute, but we would recommend that the school board consider the schedule question tonight, if possible. Just because of the nature of the amount of work that's needed to move forward.
Yeah, I think, I think we can discuss it, but we can't make a decision today. Unfortunately, this is not, that's not possible, I think there needs to be a lot of, I think we need to have a lot of discussion. We don't, I don't think we have a ton of time tonight, which is unfortunate, but there's, I know there's, we'll get into the schedule in a second.
Okay, all right.
Could I just ask one other?
Yep.
Consideration. I think one of the things that I had a hard time with was it was presented as an all or nothing. I mean, the whole thing, the roof needs, needs work, we recognize that. It's beyond its rated useful life. But, so could we consider bonding? You know, getting the roof and the windows done with one bond and then phasing in other projects? The, the safety issue, the, the noise abatement issue, other issues, but, you know, for, for a later time. And, you know, sort of breaking it up into discrete, manageable.
You, you couldn't, we had, we had talked about that and, and that's something that we wanted to get feedback from the board. As far as do we want to do one big package or, you know, perhaps, okay, the, the roof is something that clearly needs to be done, seem to have some really good support. That's something could probably package up pretty quick and say, get into a June kind of vote. And then that one's, you know, off the table, but I think that's something that, you know, the board needs to really weigh in on how to do that. There's always risks either way you go. If you just go back for yet again, another large project and that goes down, then you've continued on not having the roof work done.
I mean, I would have some real concern with, I mean, I'm all for, you know, maybe breaking it up and I talked to Bob Mason about it a little bit and how, you know, once you bond for the money, do you need to spend it over a certain amount of time or can you draw it down? Because I would, you know, personally like to see a more phased approach, but what I wouldn't like to see is all of a sudden we go, we do a roof and then a year, two years from now, we then take the HVAC off the roof and then have to, you know, penetrate the roof to get, you know, all of a sudden you just put a new roof and then, you know, my experience is the last thing you want to do is then. My experience is the last thing you wanna do is then create another penetration, build another curve, and then, you know, you're just going backwards. But, you know, my thought was to, you know, look at an area, maybe we do one wing. But maybe we get prep the roof and do the entire roof and, you know, just a little different phasing. Which potentially, I think we could save some money.
I'd need to see all the pros and cons with each one of those issues.
Yeah.
Just a real decision table on each one because I, I understand those different viewpoints. And I already know the pluses and minuses that have been discussed on both of those. And I don't know how to make a decision about either one until I see all of them in front of me.
Right, yes.
I was gonna say, just that little bit of feedback that I got also, there's a lot of people, you know, I, I think we have the community engaged in the subject. Um, and people realize, oh, this is actually really happening, I should really finally focus on it. And, you know, to get people, you know, I just don't wanna rush our next vote in terms of coming up sort of pre-summer. I mean, in, if we broke off roof and window separately, I, I think that's definitely an approach. But, you know, I think laying a little more discussion, a little more groundwork for, you know, a, a larger, if we elect to stick with one vote. You know, um, waiting a little bit of time to.
Yeah, I, I'd agree with you, Matt, I don't, I wouldn't wanna see us rush prematurely into a vote. I'd like to see us go into it and do it the right way, be successful at it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think the other thing is, I mean, we're pretty close to support, I mean, you look.
Yeah. Seventy-seven votes.
You know, seventy-seven votes, so in my mind, that says maybe we're not far off. And maybe with a little, some more options, a little more due diligence, a little, you know, sharper on the pencil maybe. That we potentially can get it to fly.
Yeah, let's, um, let's continue through here and we'll, we'll get into a few slides that, that we're talking about, on all the things that we're talking about right now. Um, so a few options that we talked about, one is, you know, do nothing. Um, the, another option is dividing up the scope into separate ballot items. And then another option is, is repackaging uh as one ballot item, but, you know, again, looking to um. Looking at ways to reduce the cost of that, so, you know, the intent would not be to, to go back out at the same cost again. It would be to reevaluate, do some additional investigative work and, uh, and, and go back out with a reduced cost. So thinking about the do nothing option, um.
Can I add one thing to that, you know, of changing the financing terms? In terms of, you know, thirty-year versus twenty-year, not that I'm hugely in favor one way or the other, but to the extent it just impacts, you know, people's taxes. Most people go for thirty-year mortgages, that sort of thing, you know, I can't say I'm wedded one way or the other, but it's, it's an option to consider anyway.
How long's our curb roof? Curb roof is twenty-three years, I believe. Yeah, it's not a really good idea to finance something that's twenty-three years old for thirty years. You know what I mean, so?
Yeah, well, I mean, to the extent that that's a part of, you know, the, the windows are, you know, most of what we're financing should have a longer than thirty-year lifespan, so.
And I suspect changes in roofing technology, that you probably get a longer life roof today than you did twenty-five years ago.
Okay, we can get one, and that's, that's definitely on the table, but yeah.
Yeah, but you know, you just have to, it all, it's all ways to minimize the tax implications in, in the short term, because that's obviously the big driver.
Dave, uh, we have one member of the community here who would love to, I think, I think.
The problem, the problem is, is that the audience. Communication. Audience and communication was the first thing on the.
Oh, okay, did, but, do you?
I'll just talk to you offline then, I don't know.
Okay.
So, um, so under the do nothing option, you know, some considerations are, you know, continuing to patch the roof. Uh, or at some point in time, the roof does need to be replaced and, you know, costs continue to go up. Uh, continuing with the single pane windows and replacing those at a later time, you know, eventually at some point in time, those will need to be replaced. Again, at a higher cost, um, continuing on with the safety risk and acoustical and learning impact of the D and E wings. Uh, some sub considerations are that, you know, this do nothing approach is a, is a reactive approach. Rather, you know, dealing with things on an emergency, uh, tight basis, uh, as opposed to, um, a proactive. And, and addressing it right up front. Um, you've got a short-term cost containment, uh, so in the short run, you know, it's not as much of a cost impact to anybody. Uh, there are some legislative unknowns, we don't know what the state legislature is going to do or not do in terms of education funding reform. In the long term, costs are gonna go up, um, inflation, construction market increases essentially three to five percent a year. Um, and, uh, and bond costs increase as well. Um, there's talk in the, in the feds right now about, um, increasing interest rates. Um, there's a potential for continued leaks and damage to the building, so, um, increased operational costs. Um, and it doesn't resolve the, the safety concerns or the acoustical learning impact like Tim had noted.
I mean, I did, just kind of in the spirit of time, I mean, I don't think anybody's in the mindset of a do nothing approach. I think it's better options, more options, you know, I don't wanna speak for the group, but that's the vibe I'm getting.
The one thing, Rob, we have a meeting at seven.
Okay, I'll try and, I'll try and run through this real quick. Um, so dividing the scope into separate ballot items, uh, is, is the other one, um, putting the, you know, re, repackaging these into different ballots. The grouse for, allows for greater flexibility for taxpayers, um, will cost more because they're standalone items. And there's a potential for continued leaks and damage to the building if, if you don't, if the, if you don't vote for the re-roofing, for example. Um, uh, and it may not resolve safety concerns if that doesn't get voted in. Uh, and then repackaging as one ballot item, um, you know, considerations there are, um, coming up with a, a. It, it's really the most cost-effective option, uh, in terms of the long term. Um, it will require the most public outreach effort, so, uh, a lot of what we talked about there and reaching out to the public and getting voter input. Um, it, it addresses all three of the highest priority needs, so it, you know, you're not coming back at a later point in time to, uh, to vote on anything. And then, uh, and then the schedule, um, you know, one idea is to come back and, and take a vote in the second week in June. Um, and, uh, what that allows is, you know, the project is still on voters' minds, still fresh. Um, allows for, you know, three months of community involvement, um, start, uh, setting up these community forums and so forth. Overall, the project stays on the same schedule, um, so because it's, it's still close, you know, we can squinch up our time and the contractor's time. To still hit a June twenty sixteen through August twenty seventeen construction schedule. Uh, and construction costs remain the same, uh, because we're still on the same construction schedule. You still have a favorable bond market at this time, um, and, uh, I think that's it, right? Uh, and then, as opposed to shifting out to November, um, where you've got eight months of community involvement. But, uh, you know, there's a three-month lapse during the summer, three-month lapse during the summer, so. You've, you've got an opportunity to kind of re-engage voters now, a lot of people go on vacation in the summertime. Uh, and you have to kind of re-engage again in, in the fall. Uh, the project schedule shifts a year later, um, so it shifts out to June twenty seventeen to August twenty eighteen. Um, which means your construction costs are gonna increase. And interest rates, uh, will also increase. And, uh, and then, you know, delaying in the schedule may involve some increased maintenance calls for patching the roof, um, extending that out. Yep, so, um, the thought was that, um, you know, we would come back to the school board if, if you guys are interested. Um, with some options laid out so you can, uh, discuss and evaluate them. And we can initiate, um, the public community forums between now and then. And, uh, and reach out to residents and, and see who's interested to come and share their insight, um, and input. And then report back to the school board next month with, um, a little bit of a better handle on, you know, the options to consider. Um, and, and.
Timing is really challenging, and the problem, one of the problems is school vacation is one month from now. So our meeting is in three weeks instead of four. And so that's hard, um, I, I played around in my head for this, the schedule of how we could get to June. And it's difficult without the, just feeling like we're rushing something on to the public. I think if we, we obviously don't have enough time to discuss this tonight, so we couldn't possibly give it the right, um, give it justice. But if we discussed it again next month, and if we had an action in May, which we, is the earliest we could do it. Or if we had an action in September, we'd still be kind of in the same, same boat of voting in the fall sometime. Because if we act in May, we have to wait thirty days, and then you're talking late June for, earliest for a vote. And I don't, I don't think that we can address the one thousand sixty-seven people that voted no in three to four weeks, so.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I, I wanted to present it out there so that you guys know, you know, by waiting until November, you know. You are aware that there are cost implications associated with that.
I'd like to discuss it further.
But again, we're not tied to the November date, I mean, you can do a special vote at any point, so if September was appropriate.
I think I would agree with you, Dave, I think that, um, June is just way too short to really do this right. Um, I don't wanna see us fail at this again, and sometimes when you try and rush things with the projects. You probably will end up spending more money because things will be forgotten, you'll be paying, you know, a lot more money to put people on the fast track. Um, there's nothing like doing it just the good old-fashioned right way.
Yeah. So, um, I think I'm hearing that we should probably discuss it again next week or next month when we have less of a deadline afterward. I would like to, so, this ties into the next thing here.
We have one more.
Yeah, well, so. I wonder if we could, do you wanna, could we just skip to action matters and discuss an NTE? And whether or not we wanna do something like that for a period of time?
I think we're gonna need to, right?
Okay.
Doran Whittier on board?
I mean, you know, I would like to see if we could reconvene the facilities committee and talk about. You know, how we move forward with, you know, Doran Whittier's help before we all of a sudden, you know, get to a vote here and approve a NTE contract.
I think that's a good thought because, I mean, I still wanna give some clear direction from the board.
How we wanna proceed.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that. One thing we can do is we can change the scope by keeping the same footprint and reducing the, the, the cost of the work that's being done. By changing the parts list and things like that, you know, maybe you could reduce ten percent of the cost doing that. Another option is changing the, the footprint completely, and then another option is Bob's option of just. Putting a wall down each side of the hallway on all four hallways and putting doors in that. And, you know, coming up with, there's a certain amount of scope that needs to be looked at. And then the amount of architectural work and design that goes into each one of those options. So I feel like the facilities committee should decide what things you. What's the bare minimum to make the educational changes to the D and E wing, along with the security changes and the acoustical changes? And what are the things you can do from the existing scope that we just had in order to reduce the cost there? Are there things we can do, I mean, I really don't wanna continue with two hallways where we need one. Because then you can have more educational space with a little bit of construction money, but, um, you know.
I think, I think that would be all part of the, the option analysis that we would do, you know, so.
I, I really need that analysis, rather than just saying.
Yeah, as soon as you add.
I want you to do this.
You know, as soon as you add malls, you presumably still wanna add windows and you need to add doors. And there are, you know, there are costs there that aren't necessarily optimally designed, so again, it's what you get for what you pay. And, and, uh, we just need to, you know, it'd be great to get numbers, it'd be great to get design time to view, and that's where I think.
What comes, like, what, which is first, the cart or the horse, you know, and that's.
That's why I think we should reconvene as the facilities committee, get a, and then come back to the board and say. Potentially, this is the direction and this is what we're gonna need for architectural services to go forward, and then.
I don't think the board can advise you on which way to go, I think it's, the facilities committee has been working two years as the experts on the facility. And, and I, I feel as though you need to come to the board and say, this is what we suggest. Needs to be done going forward, and we would like you to bless us to go forward and do this.
And where you, when you say you, you mean facilities committee comes to the board and says, this is what US boards should authorize.
Right.
When we discuss and.
Right.
Or, no, I mean, here's option A, option B, option C, that's the, you know, I mean, here's the implications if we split it out. Here's the implications if we, you know, run walls down the halls, cost implications, pros and cons. I, you know, I think that's, in terms of due diligence, that's what we need to.
And, and one, one way to do it that might be helpful to get into that decision-making process is you don't spend a lot of time really getting into the knit and the detail. It's almost getting into a room and like, okay, give me an idea, okay, I got it, so what are all the good things about that, the bad things about that? And then go back to some historical, you know, per square foot kind of cost, boom, and it all becomes relative. And so you can quickly get a nice table of different options, what's good, what's bad, and that will help us.
There was a huge amount of work that went on over two years with, and you've got the costs already outlined for each thing, so.
So can we function as a facilities committee with, you know, to go through these options without further funding for Doran Whittier for another three weeks? I can, you know, because we're obviously not gonna fund them for three weeks now, at a minimum, if we fund them at all, so.
Yeah, I, I, we discussed this a little bit in, in the office with Lee, Doran, and, um, our proposal would be. If the school board decides, uh, to do so, would be to, for our services to continue on, if you were to go to a June bond vote. Would be not to exceed of, um, five thousand dollars and, and into November for seven. Um, and, you know, we would proceed following, you know, whatever options and development. If it's widely, you know, changing scope significantly, where we've gotta, uh, start on other parts of the building, you know. Uh, you know, that's different, but, um, but moving forward with the scope of work that we're talking about here. And creating options to help the school board make some decisions and meeting with the public and so forth. Um, you know, we're willing to do whatever is needed to, you know, to help, uh, the school board make some decisions.
So, so is that something we can put on?
Until next meeting, I mean, or should we, we probably need to because.
I, I would rather see we discussed it among ourselves and then get back to Doran Whittier. But I, I mean, I, I don't feel that we have enough, I don't think we've discussed it among ourselves yet.
Okay, so there is that issue, and then, do you, can the facilities committee proceed over the next three weeks to meet maybe once or twice? To think of, think of options without the use of Doran Whittier? You can, okay, because that's the first step, considering different options, and unfortunately, we don't have any budget left currently to support that for you. But I think there's enough expertise and, like you said, cost history to get rough order of magnitude of different things to consider.
I think the main, you know, the, the main thing that I think still needs to be answered again, I mean, it's really the Bob, the Bob design. Call it the Bob design for lack of a better description, you know, is there a way to do this, you know, substantially lower cost if we just do the wall thing? And again, I think that's, you know, what we need to look at, that's what I'd really like to have you guys get on sooner than later. That's what I'd really like to have you guys get on sooner than later, um, because again, I do think time's of the essence here. So I would probably be in favor of doing some small level of funding, you know, sooner rather than later. Because again, however, you know, we're gonna want to cost that out no matter what. So I'm, you know, for what, for what it's worth.
But David, I assume with your experience that you have some budgeting knowledge that, you know, you know, you've got to build a hundred feet of ten-foot-high sheetrock, you've got a rough idea.
At this, at this level, we typically will take, um, you know, square foot kind of cost for a type of construction. And, uh, it's a very, very quick way of getting at order of magnitude, especially relative to other options when you're looking at the same thing to help you kind of zoom in on that's favorable and that one certainly isn't going to be.
So could, could you guys meet at least once, possibly twice before our next meeting? And then provide us, I mean, Hildick provided some quick minutes this week and if we could just get updates on that, um, that would be helpful. I remind our new member and, uh, everyone else, like, in, uh, distributing all these notes, let's be sure to distribute them and then talk amongst ourselves and not reply to all in violation of the open meeting law. But, um, when you have all the board members on, if we could just do that, yep.
I could ask you just a question. So, so your charge to facilities committee is to do what in preparation for your, like, what's the goal of your next school board meeting?
To come up with one to three options, uh, potentially that you would then potentially be charged with costing? And, um, moving forward with, is this something, you know, getting real cost data from, from your folks and then taking that and building up, you know, is this what we're gonna do for our next bond? So we're gonna have to take what we had for the D and E wing. And, and this is really all just about the D and E wing, because we're, we should really do the roof and we should really do the windows. And then coming up with different options, costing them out and how we can sell them to the public and to Bob Finn so that, you know, we can have consensus among the board with how to make the school right for two thousand fifteen.
Our, our only hesitancy would be, you know, if, if you're asking, I don't know, if you're asking other people to put together options and costs that you're gonna make decisions on and then, and then basically you'll be saying, okay, it's Doran Whittier, you have this cost to work in, so make it work. When we weren't part of that development, you know what I'm saying?
But I don't think in a three-week period where we're gonna meet twice that we're taking any real deep dives into, you know, creating a footprint for the future. I mean, I think it's just kind of as, as the facilities committee, we just need to get our head around it and get back to the board and say, this is some things that we want to pursue. I don't envision us coming back saying we have three options, one's five million, one's ten million, and one's fifteen million.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking this is just kind of like litmus test kind of numbers that'll give you an idea about, is this a reasonable option or not? And certainly isn't anything that you'd go to the bank or the bond market and get a bond on. It's something, and this, I do this all the time. I'll get a phone call, what do you think if we do this? And I'll spend maybe fifteen minutes on something with my little tool bag that I got and, okay, that's gonna be roughly, yeah, a million and a half dollars or whatever.
Okay, needless to say, uh, you know, to be, the fact, to the extent that we are not running this through professional costing, you know, tools, but rather back of the envelope, you know, it's, we, we place that level of trust and accordance in it. So needless to say, you know, if you come back and say, well, in fact, that option is substantially different, you know, I think that's very appropriate. And that's ultimately why we are relying upon professional expertise opposed to going in there with a bunch of contractors and starting with a, you know, banging away.
And, and I, I want the facilities committee and the school board to feel like they had a, a germ in the ownership of this idea. And, and come up with some different options and then vet them with an architect and proceed from there. We're not, I'm not proposing that we come up with a cost and dictate to you what you're gonna do. But I know that that doesn't work and I understand where you're coming from. I do feel that five to seven thousand dollars for three to s- eleven, I don't know, till the support in November, I think that's very cost-effective in my opinion, I think that's pretty reasonable, so I appreciate that and, um.
Well, I think we're, we're not ready yet to say it's going to be five thousand or seven thousand, because we don't know whether it's gonna be June or later yet either. So we can't make that decision right now.
I think realistically, to, to consider doing it in June, it's, I mean, we'd be making the same mistake all over again. We wouldn't have time to, you know, really do the diligence and then do the due process with the community.
I think that's, I think that's the number one thing is fitting in a forum in April or May is, is not gonna happen. So I totally agree with you, Bob. So I don't want you to lose any sleep about us proposing a June vote. I don't want you writing any letters to the paper about how we're proposing a June vote. Because I want to tell Gail Callahan that we're not proposing a June vote. So, uh, I think we can, uh, we can put that one to bed. You feel better about your task for the facilities committee for the next, next, uh, three weeks? And, um, we're now gonna go, we'll just proceed through the rest of our agenda quickly.
We have somebody here who's telling us we really.
They noticed your abs.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I don't think they're waiting for us, I think they're just.
Well, I don't know if they have a call about us.
So, um, I didn't just say what I wanted to say. So, so we could, could, uh, move to discussion matters. Uh, seven point one, which is policy. Uh, does anybody have any issues with any of the policies that have been brought forward? I don't think we have any eighteen-year-old students in our building, so if we do, we have some problems. So could I, uh, we'll skip, uh, boards' corners for action matters. Um, eight point one, uh, I assume you've all read and gone over the code of conduct for school boards? And can I get a motion to, uh, affirm the code of conduct for Shelburne School District school members?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, nine point, nine point O, our consent agenda, could I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Bob Finn and, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and confirm our next meeting dates, including our CSSU board next door and, uh, get a motion to adjourn. All right, thanks very much.